All right, so Kelly's not gonna make it, so I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Start out by just everybody saying, or council members saying where you are and what county and so forth. So Bruce Cantor, Letherton Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
The matter, Saleem Siddiqui, Letherton Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
Ian Ferguson, Letherton Village, Oakland County.
All right, so we are now called to order, so we're going to start out with the discussion items, and we'll begin with the professional auditing services, so we have a draft for a draft RFP. And I'll let Cheryl introduce that.
Yes, if you recall, I was tasked with drafting an RFP for our auditing services, and you had a preliminary draft, and this is pretty much the finalized version. It shows an issue date of April 15th. I was intending to bring it to council for final approval. Response is due by June 1st, proposals evaluated, basically that's second week of June from the 7th to the 11th. Coming back to council, or coming back for interviews if we choose to have additional interviews or questionings for the submissions, the week of the 21st, and the award on that date, as well as the contract commencing with our new fiscal year July 1st. And in summary, it's suggesting a five-year contract with an option for two additional one-year incremental extensions, and a presentation to council each year in November at the council meeting, and in time for the submission to the state of Michigan, though later than December 31st of each year.
Okay, and I'm assuming there's no disruption in service if we should go with a different vendor than our current, correct?
I can't necessarily say that. They usually start around August, but they don't have to get...
No, they start around June usually.
Yeah.
So we might possibly start a little bit later if for some reason we choose a different vendor that are existing. All right, I did notice there was a typo on page 21, page 21 of the packet, page 17 of the agreement, under the insurance section.
Okay.
Last words of that first paragraph, it says City of Novi.
Okay.
So I think we know where we cannibalize this.
For sure. Okay.
Anybody, anyone else have any comments, questions? I know Saleem and Ian, you guys have been involved with us, so you guys have anything?
No, not at all. No, I don't have any comments. That's fine. Except for the Novi part.
Yeah, except for the Novi part, okay. All right, then we'll move on to item B, which is the infrastructure committee, which is our draft recommendation for roads for the summer of 2022, so not this summer, but next summer. So I'll go ahead and introduce this one. First off, this is a draft proposal, the committee has not, while I'm fairly confident based upon conversations with the committee and emails that have gone back and forth, that this will be our final recommendation, it still is draft, so I just want to make sure that that's crystal clear. But we are getting the road recommendations, and as you may remember, for the recommendation for the ballot initiative that was approved by the voters, said that the committee would recommend roads for each construction season, and then the city council would then go ahead and act on their recommendation. So we're putting the recommendation out for the 2022 summer construction project. It may seem a little bit early, but the engineering for that work has to take place, you know, before the snows hit. And so basically, over the next, you know, four to six months or so. And as you remember, we were, because of the late ballot approval, we were late to the game for this particular construction season, for the summer. So we're trying to avoid that by getting the recommendation out early. You can see the roads that are recommended, just at a high level. What we did is, we had the engineers, the chief engineer, I'm sorry, the project engineer and our city engineer make the recommendation to the committee, so that removes any kind of bias, or, you know, because they're kind of oblivious to any city politics, or where residents live, or any specific resident issues. So they made their recommendation based on engineering cost, minimizing disruption, and so forth. What they did do for this, for, let's just call it year two, for year two of the road initiative, is they picked roads that required, for the most part, the 1A full reconstruction. So as you guys may remember from the recommendation, there was a significant mileage of 1A full reconstruction, which is by far the most expensive of the three categories, because it requires digging out the existing road, 14 inches deep, I think it is, and then replacing the entire road. So their thought was, if we were to group all of these 1A roads in one season and maximize the volume, we could get a good discount from the chosen vendor because of economies of scale. So hopefully by doing that, we'll spend less than what we anticipated, like we did this year, and have more to spend on the entire project. Trying to think what else, oh, and then they also, there were also two roads that in this summer are undergoing water main repairs, or I shouldn't say repairs, replacements. And so those roads, those roads will be all torn up, and so those roads will be repaved as part of next summer's project. So those were kind of no brainers as far as the choice for roads, to be included in the road list for summer of 2022. And then the other issue, I guess, or cost savings reason behind some of the road choices for year two, was one of the 1A, one of actually the longer 1A full reconstruction roads is south of 696, I think it's Lether Boulevard, I think it is? Yeah, I think it's, I think it's...
It is.
Yeah, Lether Boulevard from Southfield Road to Coral Gables, yeah. And because they'll be mobilized to that area, there are only two other road segments that were on the eligible list, south of 696, very short segments, they were both, I think, one block each. So the engineers felt that it made sense to do those roads as long as we've mobilized over to that area, so that we don't have to mobilize there again next year and incur additional charges. So so those are the roads that we chose. There are some other minor factors. CMS Energy is going to be doing a project in 2023 between 11 and 12 mile on the east side. And so again, they factored that in, we didn't want to be doing a lot of, you know, serious construction while the CMS Energy project is going on, so we, to avoid conflicts. And so we, again, took that serious, the more intensive, I guess is the word that I should use, the more intensive construction, and we moved it to this September, 2020, year two.
Yep.
2022, year two.
Yep.
So I think that was, that's the gist of it. Again, I'm hoping that at our April meeting, we'll have the final recommendation for council to act on. So any questions on that?
So is the Cambridge Road one, Bruce is the only one that's, they're also gonna, they're doing a special assessment district, or?
Yeah, so Cambridge was supposed to have been done this summer, but CMS, in order for that work to be done, CMS has to move a line, and that's not, that couldn't be done in time for this year's construction season. So we moved it to next year's construction season, so year two, summer of 2022. That particular segment of road from Southfield Road to Lether Boulevard on Cambridge has a horrific ditch system that is really, really bad, with lots of backups and ponding. And that one really is, was the only one that we chose for, initially for the summer, that required an SAD, so that SAD will be next year. It should, the plan anyways, is to start the SAD process with our next council meeting in April. So do, you know, do the first of the public hearings or the announcements, I guess. I can't remember, what's the name of it, Scott, there's a name, notice of... You're on mute.
Yeah, notice of intent.
Notice of intent, yeah. So we'll issue the notice of intent, and the idea is, is that we won't finalize that SAD if all goes well until after the deadline for this year's taxes, so they won't pay, start paying until next year, when the construction actually takes place. But again, just as a reminder, the, you know, the the recommendation that was made and accepted by us basically said that if an SAD is necessary and the residents of that street block that SAD, then we take that street off the list and move on to a different street. So that's why in the document it says contingent upon approval of their ditch special assessment district. Discussion, any other questions?
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay, it does. Appreciate the insight.
Yeah, thanks. Then let's go on to the sign ordinance, I think, Scott, are you introducing that?
Yeah, so this is, this spent a long time coming. We started this actually last year, probably around this time, I would think. Partially in response to some of the political signs that had gone up. Also, it was in response to some concerns over the backlit signs. It did go to planning commission, planning commission put some some of their feedback and provided some tweaks to it, and then it kind of just slipped through the cracks. It's been revived, and I don't know, I don't think it was included in your packet. I don't know if it was, Jill had just sent it over maybe an hour ago.
Yeah, I emailed it like half hour, hour ago, something like that.
Okay, so it does include some of, it does include all of those comments and updates, with the exception of, what'd she say, there was one as far as the one of your comments, Bruce, that didn't make it.
Great, of course.
Dealt with the size, let me try to find her email.
It says, you had suggested, Bruce, that, I mean, increase the maximum to 20, for temporary signs, suggested a maximum of 24 square feet with a max of six square feet. And Jill's comment was that the intent is that we're accommodating, for example, a real estate sign, a new roof sign, and a save the whales, all of which would have otherwise been permitted, so deferring to Scott on whether or not we're providing adequate opportunity for free speech.
What, Suzy, what page is that on, of the ordinance?
I don't know the page number, I was just reading directly from her, her email to me.
Oh, okay.
Temporary signs, so they have it tabled.
So wait, can you say that again, because I remember I had a lot of comments, and I don't, I'm trying to remember that, that, the context of that particular one.
You did indeed, sir, the, all right, so first, the the temporary sign table is on page 36 of the sign ordinance that I sent over, 36 of the PDF, I should say. And your comment back in October was that you had suggested 24 square feet with a max of six square feet.
What do you mean, 24 square feet with a max of six? That seems to contradict.
It does.
That's why I'm having trouble trying to remember which comment this was.
No, you're gonna make me book.
Does it mean 24 square feet in total with a max of six for one sign or something? Is it multiple signs together?
Right, because we had talked about, as I remember, we had talked about, you know, them being two by, two feet by three feet, like they are, like the ordinance is right now. Because the ordinance right now is two feet by three feet, six square feet. And we had talked about, and I think it was pretty much a consensus of the planning commission of moving it, you know, keeping it as two by three, six square feet. If I'm thinking about the same, the same thing.
Let's see, that's a freestanding, so in the sign ordinance as it's presented to you tonight, we have the max, the maximum area of all temporary signage. Now, this is just for freestanding, so those would be kind of like those little long signs that she was talking, that we were talking about. Says point two square feet of sign area per linear foot of street frontage, provided that the maximum allowable total area shall not be less than 15 square feet, nor more than 48 square feet.
Right, and I think...
The maximum area of any individual sign would be 12 square feet.
Right, and we had had a lot, I remember we had discussion on this, and, you know, nobody liked that, because I think the, I think the two reasons that were given was, if I remember correctly, and again, my notes are in the basement, but one was that different people would have different amounts of allowable sign based upon their linear footage, and second of all, that, you know, if you have a six square foot sign and you've got 48, you know, square, what is it, 48? That's, you know, you could have eight signs, you could turn your front lawn into, you know, nothing but signs, which is why we went back to something that was more similar to what we currently have for the existing ordinance. So what was Jill's rationale? What did she say in the email to you?
Is that leaving it as it is would allow adequate opportunity for people to express themselves with, for example, like a road, like a real estate sign, a, I just got my roof done by so-and-so roofing, and save the whales, because they're really big.
Leaving it the way it is, meaning in the document or the way it currently is in ordinance right now?
In the document.
Yeah.
I'm looking to see what we have right now.
So let me ask a procedural question, since this is the first time everyone has seen the revised ordinance. Do we want to bring it back for further discussion at your next meeting on the 19th? And not even introduce it that date, but perhaps wait to make certain that we have all the edits and language that you're comfortable with?
Yeah, I was just gonna suggest the same thing, that way it gives us time to go through it as a council, because, I mean, I've seen it before, but the rest of council hasn't.
Okay.
Yeah, I need more time, that's a good idea, thank you.
Yeah, okay, so let's table this till the next, next study session in April.
In the meantime, obviously, if you have thoughts or comments, feel free to send those over to Jill or myself.
Okay, and is it correct this does not need to go back to the planning commission?
Correct, this is a general ordinance amendment, so it's two readings of the, before the city council.
Okay.
Will you have time to, you know, update the edits and then send it out ahead, ahead of the next meeting? So we can get some time to review it.
Oh no, you have, you have the final draft now.
Oh, this is the final draft, I thought we had more edits.
Final draft, yeah.
Okay.
Planning commission's, you know, comments and changes included.
Got it. Okay, all right, my mistake, I thought you had to edit further.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, anything else on that? All right, then let's slide into item D, which is Eagle's, our third administrative consent order with Eagle regarding regarding the tank, and I'll turn that over to Cheryl.
Thank you. This is the long-awaited amendment to the administrative consent order. This is the third amendment, the second one was issued back in 2005, and it negotiates what they call the town outlet capacity, a T O C, for sanitary wastewater that can be discharged at the 3.35 cubic feet per second. And it's anticipated that this is going to be replaced by the future Oakland County flow capacity agreement, which is in part going to be in your next agenda item. So the city is to submit a long-term corrective action plan to Eagle for review and approval, and then by September 1, 2022, the city is to submit a work plan with implementation schedule to certify that the long-term corrective action plan meets either the T O C or flow capacity agreement along with the progress reports.
And just for reference, for anybody who's watching, this has to do with the, you know, the consent order that we're under relative to our sanitary retention tank over on 11 and Evergreen, where we've had overflows in the past, and because of that are under a dissent decree from Eagle.
So this will be on the April 19th for your final approval.
Any questions or comments on that? Okay, then, related to that is item E, which is the Evergreen Farming and Sanitary Drain District, moving to a Chapter 20 agreement, and I will turn that right back over to Cheryl again.
All right, so if you recall, what, a month or two ago, the drain commissioner staff made the presentation to council where they discussed the conversion, and with the Chapter 20 drain, there will be a three-person board that's chaired by the Oakland County Water Resource Commissioner, Jim Nash, and I think the board chair, and I believe one other person who will chair that, and they will make the recommendations and decisions relative to the overall drainage district, which includes all of the communities that are currently in the EFSDS, which is now becoming the EFSD, which is a Chapter 20 drain. So part of their administrative consent order and their corrective action plan is also dealing with increasing the capacity. So they are going to have a couple of projects in relationship to that. One is with the Great Lakes Water Authority, and an agreement to allow for the flow to go into their system at an increased level. That's going to be a $33 million project. And then relative to the Evergreen system itself, there are some some improvements that are going to be involved, and that's a $35 million project. And then the Letherton Village portion of that is with the upgrades to the sanitary retention tank, which is about a $500,000 project, which if you recall, is included in the bond issuance that we are going forward with. So the debt service for Letherton Village is included in your cover memo, and so what you'll have before you at April 19th is the improvement of our participation in this Chapter 20 drainage district and their proposed funding.
I had a question on this, Cheryl, probably Pam. I was not at that water meeting, and they were supposed to have recorded it, and they messed up the recording, so I never, never got to see it. But right now, I know that our flow rate is 3.35, and that encompasses both the tank side and then south of 696, so that's our combined, our combined rate at any given time. And in the document on page 60, it looks like it's showing under the, under the town outlet capacities, it looks like it's showing the increased flow rate, so where it shows, it shows two numbers for us, a 2.66 and a 6.05. So is that indicative of each side? So the tank side gets a flow rate of 6.05, and the south of 696 gets 2.6? Or what are those two numbers? Do the other of you guys know?
That I would have to confirm, that would be my assumption.
Oh Pam, you're saying something, but you're on mute.
I was saying the same thing as Cheryl was gonna say, that I'm not sure. We need to find that one out.
Can you find out, Cheryl, I'm curious, I just, if that is, if that is correct, then that's great, because that's essentially doubling our flow rate.
Yes.
More than doubling our flow rate, which means the likelihood of us getting backups or have to have a sanitary overflow is probably greatly diminished.
Okay.
Ian, Saleem, anything?
No, no. How does this work? So is our share of the, so there's a bond issued for this, and we get a share of that? Our share of the GLWA is a million nine?
Right, so there's two, going to be two bond issuance. The GLWA is first, I believe, and then for the Evergreen system will be second, and that's going to be, I believe, spring of next year.
So we're gonna pay that back, we have the debt service on it, so how's that gonna be paid back?
So that would normally be paid back through our sewer fund and the rates.
Yeah, and then our portion, Saleem, the modifications and upgrades to the tank, that's covered under the capital improvement bond that we just passed two months ago.
Okay, got it.
And for those of you who missed the meeting with the Water Resource Commission staff, there's links in the cover memo and on the agenda to the presentation that they gave.
I tried them, they didn't work.
The, they didn't?
No, I tried, I tried them when I was reviewing it last night, and I, so I could find out more about it, and it didn't go anywhere.
Okay, even on the cover memo?
You're talking about the overview link that's there?
Yeah.
On page 30, yeah, on page 36, yeah, I clicked on that one.
Okay, I can send it to you.
Yeah, send it to me also, he's great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Letherton Village lead service line, replacement policy in agreement, so you know, as you guys know from the presentation that I've done for the material line, for the capital improvement bond, that, you know, we're, we, the city are responsible for replacing any water service lines that are galvanized or lead, and so I believe this is the, I believe this is the policy in agreement that we'll have with residents who fall into that category, and I'll turn it over to Cheryl and let her introduce that again.
Okay, so Suzy and I both worked on this draft of the policy, which we might have borrowed from another community heavily.
Might have, it's all good, it's all good.
But in any event, it outlines what the city is committing to do, and then there is the actual agreement with the property owners whose service lines will need to be replaced, and that's shown at the end of your packet as well. If you recall, we'll be utilizing the contractor through SACWA for the actual service line replacements. And in addition, we, as part of our capital improvement plan, we have the replacement of the stop boxes. And since this contractor will already be on site and digging, excavating, it made sense for them to go ahead and do those stop box replacements as well. So it didn't make sense to have two different digouts to have their stop boxes replaced. So basically, it's just letting you know what the policy is going to be, as well as what the contract agreement with the property owners will look like, and we'll start rolling those out almost immediately. We've identified, I think it's 21 properties at the present time, which have lead or galvanized materials, and it seemed to make sense to just go ahead and get those all done. We were planning on 10 initially, but since there seems to be some cost savings in some other areas, including that we don't have to do every single property, but just 20 property for the verification portion, there's some cost savings, so we're going to go ahead and do the replacement for those that have been identified to date.
Yeah, let me expand on that real quickly, Cheryl. Just to let everybody know, because probably you and I know, but I don't know that everybody else knows, since we last talked about the service line material identification, you know, we talked about having to do excavations at the sidewalk, down five feet to visually inspect the line going into the stop box and the line going out of the stop box for 18 inches on each side. That still has to be done, but before, it had to be done at every single house, every single property in the city. And Eagle has changed their requirements, and basically now, you have to do a statistical sample, roughly around 20%, there's some breaks depending on how many, how many homes are in the, in a given city, but for us, we basically have to do a random sample of about 300 and 500. But for us, we basically have to do a random sample of, of about three hundred and fifty homes. And so they identify a process to randomly identify, you know, parcels and we've gone through that process already. We actually have a map created, a G I S type map that shows the three hundred and fifty homes that, that will be, will be excavated and those homes will all be excavated this summer. We were gonna do five hundred a year to, to meet the previous mandate, mandate, but since the mandate changed, we're gonna do them all this year and hopefully, we don't know for certain, but, but hopefully that will be the requirement and they won't increase it. And if that's the case, then, and this is what Cheryl said a second ago, that kind of reminded me to, to mention this is, is we did budget somewhere in the neighborhood, I think it's somewhere between six hundred and eight hundred thousand dollars for the, the the excavation, so we should be spending significantly less, which should free up that money to be used for, for other things or to not be used at all if, if we, if we don't need it. But so as Cheryl said, rather than just doing ten, ten line replacements that we know of, we're gonna do all twenty-one of them this year because we do have some extra funds now.
How were those, how were those twenty-one identified through that survey process?
Yes, through, through the, mostly through the self-identification, right Cheryl?
Right, and some we already had on record from past on water samples. So, and then the self-identification and currently Eagle requires us to replace twenty percent of known lead and galvanized service lines, so.
No, no, no. Five percent.
I'm sorry, five percent, yes, five percent.
Minimum, minimum of five percent of what we know for twenty years.
Oh, this statistical, sorry, Suzie, go ahead. No, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I, I did talk to Scott Ringler this morning. Different meeting, but I, he said that even though the, the three hundred and fifty random ram, random properties that we've chosen for the exterior, that has to happen for the exterior. He's, he still believes that the interior verification will still be required for all properties. So we really still need to push.
Right, right, right.
Push that.
Based on the document that he, Scott sent us originally, that's, that was the impression that all, all houses have to have the interior identified. So again, as a public service announcement, if anybody is watching this or watching the recording, if you haven't done your your self-identification, it takes less than two minutes. It's extremely easy. It's very important. If you don't want to have somebody come into your house during COVID, then you, you should do it yourself. And the instructions for that are on the city website, so if you go to the, the front page, the main page of the website, in the news section, it'll, it'll give you a link to go to the, go to the instructions on how to do it. Again, it takes, takes about two minutes to do it. It's very simple.
Yeah, quick question on the, on the, the three hundred and fifty homes, so that's what you're doing your statistical analysis on, right?
No, the statistical analysis was, this was done on all the homes. Basically, all seventeen hundred homes or roughly seventeen hundred homes were eligible to be, were, were in, in the pool to be excavated and they, they did a random sampling process to pick three hundred and fifty from that seventeen hundred.
Okay, I see. So just, just a quick question, so the three hundred and fifty random sampling, are those obviously is random, but did you guys take into consideration the age of the home because the probability?
You can't.
I know you can't.
The guidelines, there, there's all sorts of things you cannot take into account basically to make it as random as possible.
It would have been nice if we could have used this for the sampling, the areas where we're going to be constructing roads or putting in water mains and they specifically said it can't be project specific, that it has to be a true random. And actually gave you the formula, formula for doing the randomization electronic, so.
Right, but, but those, those, Cheryl, I'm assuming that's still the plan that those that we have identified that are in the street reconstruction zones will be done prior to May third, correct?
Yes, that, that was part of what I was meaning. We, we had a G I S meeting today, so that, that is exactly what's gonna happen. So Cassie, our G I S guru, she has, she's taking all, she's got all of those random properties in our, in the paving map right now. And so everything, all those properties that are within our blue highlighted areas, those are phase one, priority phase one. And then anything that is out, any of those ran, any of those random properties that are outside of our phase one paving, those will become phase two for excavation because they will all be done this year, so.
Okay, and Saleem, I know you've been trying to ask a question, so go ahead.
No, I, I just wanted to verify for myself and anyone listening, so this, the, the sampling of the three fifty, the purpose is to determine the exterior, to determine if there's lead, lead lines on the exterior of the property, right? And that the city would fix that?
Right, so if we, if we identify, if we identify lead either inside the home or at the stop box, then the line gets replaced. All right, anything else with respect to the lead service line replacement? All right, then moving right along, let's see, where are we? So last Monday, Tuesday, whatever day it was, we had a meeting about goals and performance measures. And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong Cheryl, that, that the idea here was just to give everybody the updated copy?
Yes. So what you have in your packet are the two documents and I restructured the original one, which had the goals and objectives and created the third column, which is more the strategy. So the goals and the objectives are the things that council wants to see accomplished and the strategies are more of how it's to be accomplished. And something seemed to fit better in other categories, so I, I, I took some liberties and moved them. But if you had any other additional changes or comments, that's pretty much what I think we should be going with, but if you have anything else, let me know. And then the second document are the performance measures and that was initiated by staff in the departments. And I offered some comments and then council also added some additional comments relative to things that they want to see us accomplishing as the administration. And the changes that were added by council are the items that are bolded on that document called Goals and Performance Measures.
So what are, what are our thoughts or what, what are, or maybe we, maybe you and Kelly have talked about this, I don't know, in terms of I guess, looking throughout the, the, the next year that we're, we're moving towards those, those, those goals and performing, you know, in that direction, so are we gonna readdress or revisit these every three months, every four months, every six months? Did, did we talk about that or?
We didn't talk about it. It would make sense. It would start with the July year, but we could have quarterly updates on those. And we might have to do some reassessment because some of them may be challenging to actually try to do performance, it's a grateful as a goal. But I was just thinking in terms of, I was asked to have a twenty-four hour turnaround for my contacts with residents. I said, that means I have to keep track somehow every time somebody contacts me and how quickly I responded. I don't know if I'm gonna be able to do that. I'm still trying to do it in twenty-four hours, but keeping track might, I'm not sure how that's going to work, so.
Right, right, you know, maybe the, maybe the measure of performances of that is, is, you know, fewer, rather than having a you know, a documentation system, which is just gonna eat up more time, the, the, the measure of that is, you know, whether or not we're getting less complaints about, you know, us delay, with delayed response, you know, something along those lines.
Right.
But I, but I, I understand your point.
I mean, the rules of engagement may have to apply here because the twenty-four hour turnaround part of it is, it's gonna be very difficult to gauge, so you know, might have to revisit that and kind of smooth it out a little bit.
Yeah. Okay, is this next one, fund balance and reserve policy, is that Pam or is that still Cheryl?
Well, it's technically both of us. And this is something that we had, one of the policies we were looking at bringing forward and it just so happened that the binding agency actually asked if we had one in place and so I guess the timing's pretty good. I did something similar when I was in Albion, so again, we, we copied heavily from that and just made the adjustments for us and it's considered the best practice even for the G F O A and G A S P to have that in place. And it formalizes our expectations in regards to what we do with our fund balance, which we unofficially have the fifteen to twenty percent as that, that range and this just formalizes that.
Yeah, my, my guess is after reading through it, that it's, it's, it's probably documenting what we're for the most part doing anyways, so. Yeah.
Pam, was there anything you wanted to add?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
I, I have a question. I mean, from a D D A, I assume this applies to the D D A too and, and the whole.
Not necessarily. It's really more of a general fund.
Okay.
Now, the D D A can make its own determination on what they think they should keep in reserves.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And I, and typically, I mean, I know last year was the first year in ages that the city's ever had to dip into its general fund to, to make budget, but, but we're typically well above that fifteen to twenty percent range, right? Because, because I mean, our general fund, what is it? It's been like one, one-fifth, one-sixth of our expenses? Or no, yeah, okay, I guess that's about twenty percent, so we're, yeah, we're, we're pretty much above that, so. Yeah. Okay, um, anything else, Ian, Saleem? All right, then move on to the city administrator report.
Thank you. Well, first and foremost, I wanted to introduce you to our newest team member, Melody Simpson.
Welcome.
She's here with us today.
Hi, Melody.
Uncle Melody.
And she's the, she's the person that greets everyone at the front desk. And she's already winning over people, people because she has candy and chocolates at the front desk to hand. So Melody, you want to say anything about yourself or just hi, whatever you want, you want to share?
No, no, just hello to everyone. I'm so proud and happy to be part of this team. It's been awesome so far. Everyone is nice and I'm just really listening and, and wanting to really get into it and learn more about the job and the city and everything that really goes on and just, you know, try to do the best I can for all of the residents. So thank you guys for having me and allowing me to be a part of the team.
Tell, tell us, tell everybody your background because it's, it fits right in perfectly with us, so.
Uh, well, I have over thirty years in retail banking, so I started back, ooh, years ago working as a teller in M B D Bank and then I, you know, went from there to a couple of different branches. I started working in administrative a few years ago and I learned that side, get a little bit of customer service training and, and instructing classes and allowing people to maintain, get their certification in customer service and their business communication as well. And then I was also the administrative assistant for CEO over at Focus Hope for a while. So I went to hand training just briefly, but I attained enough skills to come over here and win Cheryl over and become part of so I do have a little bit of knowledge. I've, I've worked with some of the B S N A and some of those things now I have a little bit of knowledge of, so I'm just looking forward to learning more and like I say, growing and, and seeing where I can go with this. But being a part of the team for a long time.
Hey, well, welcome.
Welcome aboard, Melody.
Thank you.
Good luck.
It's been a great new addition, so we're, we're very happy to have her. And also in regards to my report, as you know, our meeting packets are now on Unicoat where everyone's trying to figure out where to find stuff. And if you aren't, aren't able to find the information for the Zoom links, it's in the, what's it called? In the other, other information or something. It's also on the website, on the calendar.
Yeah.
We post some of the links in Facebook, so as people start getting adjusted to the, the new normal, it'll be a little bit easier to find. And we're talking with B S B to convert our telephone system from the T one to the cable system. It should be about a three hundred dollar a month cost savings to do that. One of the challenges we have is that our current, current system is becoming outdated and they have limited ability to do the repairs and replacement as things are getting worn out. So we're expecting that to take about a three to four week conversion process. Point and Pay is up and live and it seems to be working, so we're very happy with that. We're going to expand it. I'm anticipating to include, right now it includes the water bills, property taxes. It can't take it right now because it would be going to the county, so that'll be going live essentially for the July payments as well as permits, so things within the building department. But we want to expand it to include miscellaneous items such as business licenses, dog licenses, FOIA requests. So there, people can do everything they need to do with the city online and pay for it as well. The York Town has been printed and it's in the process of being delivered. And I've started adding the city administrator on reports to a city administrator page on our, on our website. So those reports are available for anyone who wants to see and review those. And this weekend, I just celebrated my third year anniversary with the City Administrator Village, yay!
Really?
Yes, three years, can you believe it?
I can believe it.
I can't.
Congratulations.
Thanks, thank you. The Yard Waste Service Collection started today, so that'll be every Monday. The chipping service for the branches will be on Fridays. There is the election this year for three council seats on November second. We have received one nominating petition. The police department, they, we received basically a week notice to submit a grant for federal funding for police equipment and software, so we did get that in, worked on East Street to get that in, but we got it in. And the, nothing too great's going on with the building department at the present time. We have a process now where we're meeting once, once a week with, as an internal team, just to make certain that everyone has the same information and we're moving projects forward as expeditiously as possible, but more importantly, that the communication channels are open. Recreations has a lot of fun stuff going on. This past Sunday, Saturday, they had the Breakfast with a Bunny in a a COVID-safe environment. And on June nineteenth, they're going to have an art fair. The street improvement projects are moving forward. There's a link on the website. And we're working on having a, what they call a public facing website so that people can have access to information for many of the other projects that are going on, so that they'll have a sense of what's happening on their particular block as it's happening. And again, a reminder for people to do their water service line material survey, please. And see, Planning Commission's meeting on April twentieth, they have a public hearing on the building materials standards. D D A's meeting on April sixteenth, there's going to be a first-time Juneteenth celebration. And part of that will include a diversity champion recognition and we're working on the, the committee is working on what that entire event is going to be. It sounds like it's going to be very robust. And so updates to the website are underway. The bike route wayfinding, that's still scheduled to begin that work early May and be completed around the end of May. And the Community Foundation is celebrating its twenty-fifth anniversary this year, so you'll start seeing banners and events associated with that and we're very pleased to be the recipient of some of their funding and including this year for the summer concerts and some other equipment and events that we're having here around the city. And let's see, oh, the mayor was able to organize a food, a free food distribution will be on April seventeenth, I believe. That's our, I don't have the exact time, but I'll get that out to you. And there's the adoptive road cleanup on April seventeenth, that's correct, still Suzie?
Not quite. So the, the, the businesses, we're, we're having the businesses take that whole first, that whole week of April the the businesses, we're we're having the businesses take that whole first, that whole week of April for their cleanup. So it'll be from from the from the nineteenth to the twenty third for the businesses. And then the D D A is gonna have a another cleanup that first Saturday in June. When it's a little bit more warm for volunteers. So on the fifth is when we're gonna have our our quarter wide cleanup.
Cheryl, I just I just looked up the 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 food giveaway that you just mentioned. It's April seventeenth from one to four.
Okay. Thank you. And then April twenty fourth is fourth is a big day. It's hazardous waste day, so we will have the trucks here for people to bring their hazardous waste as well as to do the paper shredding. This is yourself shredding, so you would be the one loading it onto the shredder as well as Earth Day and Arbor Day and a number of events are being planned around that. So it'll be a fun day here in Lathrow Village. That concludes my report. Oh, two other minor things that happened today. We Pam and I had the meeting with the bond rating company. So we had to answer a number of questions that they have and they asked for some additional financial documents that we'll be getting to them by tomorrow. And I was contacted by W W J Radio in regards to our kickoff of point and pay.
Thanks, Cheryl. All right, council members, any anything Ian, Salim to report?
To report, I had a question from a resident that so someone was asking me, did we, did the city receive any of the any stimulus money from the all the various different packages? And if so, is there a summary somewhere of what we received and where it was spent? At this point?
Well, we did, go go ahead, Cheryl.
Are you talking in regards to what we've received already or in regards to the American?
Probably both.
The Stimulus Act, whatever.
Yeah, probably both, like what we received already and what do we think we're gonna get from the latest one and.
It's about four hundred thousand dollars from the from the Stimulus Act. But I don't know how much, how much have we, you know, how much we've gotten up to this point of for for other?
I have it compiled and I can bring that to you. Primarily, it's been used for the part time staff to do the sanitizing of the building along with the other cleaning supplies and masks and things that we're providing to staff. Some of it was the the, I guess, the emergency paid for first responders. So some of the officers and even some of the staff, although that wasn't grant funded, but the officers received the stipend, I think it was a thousand dollars each. And then other materials and equipment even such as computers and things that allowed us to go online. But I can bring a more complete list to you along with.
Can we use the the stimulus funding for that stipend? Retroactively, I thought we could.
I believe the upcoming money that's coming, that's my impression. I know you have until, I think it's twenty four, twenty twenty four to spend it. So it's how far it goes back, that part I'm not certain of.
Yeah, the interesting, the interesting thing on it is, you know, there there's very specific requirements on what you can and can't spend it on. But then the one thing that they threw in there was storm sewer, water, water and storm sewer. So, you know, so I I I'm wondering if that was just their way of saying, you know, all right, well, if you have extra money, here's how a way you can spend it. But but that's 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 good because if we do have extra money, you know, some of that can go towards our our water and and, you know, sewer expenditures that we're have under the capital. We can under the capital improvement bond and that might mean we don't have to spend some of the money that we take out for the capital improvement bond. So again, we don't have to spend all the money that we owe the five point eight million dollars that we're we're requesting, so.
Yeah, so Cheryl, if we could get us like a summary of what of what we've gotten already and what we think we're gonna get that'd be good. Then we could share it with people that ask those questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ian, anything?
No, no, I was just thinking about the stop boxes and when we're gonna actually start the the trials. So do we have a date on the trials?
You mean the excavations?
Excavation, yeah.
Yeah, like right away.
Okay, so no hard and fast date, just as soon as we get organized and we're just gonna go out.
Week. I think it starts next week because the paving, some of those especially those, the one, the priority phase one excavations, I mean, that that paving work starts on May third, I think it is. So
Yeah.
I I I'm looking back at my notes from today. I think Scott said it's gonna start next week.
Okay. Yeah, so it's just a complete replacement of the box, no repairs or anything, right? We're gonna box with a new box.
Yeah, but there should be, there should be no water disruption when that occurs, so.
Okay, that was my next step. Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Great.
And that 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 kind of leads into to my comment, which is on Thursday, I'm gonna record the first of what will hopefully be many public service announcements. So basically, the idea is to, you know, give frequent, you know, uh 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 updates on what's going on, what to expect both in the near and short term, as that's gonna change throughout the project. Let people know, you know, your street is gonna happen in three weeks, you know, that kind of stuff. Just try to give people as much information so that they can plan you know, their lives accordingly, because there will be, you know, some significant disruption for people for short periods of 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 time, especially those people who are you know, on a on a street that's gonna be repaved. There's gonna be, you know, two to three weeks minimum of of time where they're not going to be able to access their street. So and I'll talk about a lot of this in the public service announcement, but things like, you know, what about their mail? What about their garbage? You know, you know, those 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 kinds of things. How do they, where are they gonna park? All that kind of stuff. So so probably, I'm I'm guessing the first public service announcement will probably come out, you know, probably the following week, because I know Jim will have to process it after he records it. But the first ones, the first one's gonna be a little long. Suzie, it ended up, I I practiced it once or twice and it's it's about, it's about twelve minutes. So it's a little bit longer than a PSA, but you guys gave me a lot of stuff to talk about, so.
You gave it to yourself.
Well, I gave it to myself. We all gave it to me. But yeah, I mean, given that we're we're just kicking off so many projects, you know, right now, you know, in the next couple of weeks, there's just a lot of a lot of information to pass out. So hopefully those will get be well watched and you know, we'll probably, I I don't know what frequency we talk about doing them, but we'll probably try to do them every three or four weeks or some or you know, fat more if we need to, less if we we need to, but we'll just adjust, so.
And we'll get those on the the infrastructure page too.
Yeah.
People can go back and watch, watch you on a continuous loop.
Which is, which will be great when they if they have problems sleeping, so. But yeah, we'll we'll put them every week. It's website, city, Facebook page, villagers, you know, infrastructure page wherever we can, so.
Okay.
Um, Scott, anything?
Anything I was gonna say, and I probably talked to you and Scott Ringler about this, but I did come across a different type of product for stop boxes and manhole covers. It's made out of a polymer material that's a lot lighter weight and a lot more durable. So something, and it's cheaper. So something I I thought I I'd share with you guys, it's just.
Yeah, definitely pass it on. All right. No other council comments, then I don't think we have any publicly left. Last time I checked, we didn't, but I'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. Okay. All right, since we have no public, I will close the public comment and I think that's it. Anything else before we adjourn? All right, everybody. Have a good week.
All right, thanks, everyone.
Talk to you later.